And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God our Father, Lord God, we come again saying, thank you, Lord God. Lord God, thank you for this day that you have made, Lord God. Lord God, as we have gathered here in this chambers, Lord God, I'm just asking that you will continue to give us the right mind, the right conscience, Lord God, as we do what we have to do. Lord God, I'm just asking that you continue to cover our residents in this city, Lord God, cover every student that is off for the summer, Lord God, continue to cover our police and our fire, Lord, and every resident, in Jesus' name, amen.
Alexander.
President.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines. Kalwinski. Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Vines. Kalwinski.
She's here.
Here. President.
So we have eight presidents chambers and one on Zoom. Next up, Mayor Zdravich.
Hi.
Thanks, Councilman. Thanks. Thanks, Council. Good to see you all. I wanted to approach the bench, if you don't mind, hand out some stats that some council people are waiting on, so. All right, two different sheets there. I'm going to go ahead and start off with the ordinance of the day. I handed out two sheets. Both these sheets are calls for service at all gas stations between hours of midnight and 5:00 AM. One's calls for service, it's the one with 6:57 on the bottom. That's from 2019 to the present. The other is violent crimes that took place at gas stations between hours of midnight and 5:00 AM, okay? From 2019, so the year 2019, 2020, '21, '22, to the present, all right? Violent crimes between midnight and 5:00 AM at all gas stations in the city. Hammond, 195 total violent crimes in one, two, three, four years. Forty-one thefts, 11 robberies, 10 overdoses, 16 fights, 10 domestic batteries, 15 batteries, 20 auto thefts, and assortment of other crimes. The second sheet you'll see, this was all compiled today, okay? It wasn't compiled by me either, but if you have any questions, we could dig into it. Calls for service. Hammond police officers, Hammond firefighters, calls for service to all gas stations between hours of midnight and 5:00 AM, 657 calls for service. Waking up fire crews in the middle of the night, sending police officers over in the middle of the night. Unfortunately, Hammond had another violent crime that took place at a gas station after the hours of midnight about a week ago. This isn't the only time that's happened. Obviously, we've had hundreds over the last four or five years. I think it's very reasonable to, it's definitely within the power of the city government. We issue business license, we're given powers under the Indiana code to regulate hours, and I think this is a simple decision. I know it affects people, but we could plan better so that you can fill up your gas tank during business hours before midnight. We're talking about midnight to 5:00 AM. Between those hours, the gas station under Hammond ordinance would require to be shut down. Now, there are some gas stations, we are the crossroads of America, and there are some gas stations that people are traveling through the area between hours of midnight and 5:00 AM, and they may need to get gas. I understand these situations come up, so we set up a system in here, and I, perfect examples would be the new gas station that's getting built down by Cabela's. I think it's called Casey's. It's not open yet. It's got 30, 40 pumps. They're literally put it there strategically so that there's people on the highway that need to get gas after hours, they just simply pull off, and that gas station could petition to stay open if they want to stay open. Maybe they don't want to be open between hours of midnight and 5:00 AM, but if they want to be open, they go to the Board of Public Works and Safety where a Hammond police officer sits on that panel, the Assistant Chief of Police, quite frankly, sits on that panel, and we get asked questions like, do you have a security system in place? Do you have a good track record? Have you ever had calls for service? Things like this. And if it's a situation like the one on Casey's, it's off the interstate, it makes total sense for it to be open. A lot of places where these crimes are taking place in the middle of the night, quite frankly, I'm not sure why they stay open until 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning. It's not off the interstate. The violent crime we had last week was right in downtown Hammond, not near an interstate at all. I can't imagine how many people are filling up their car at 2:00 in the morning. I think it's unsafe. That's where I'm coming from. I've been in charge of this city for 20 years. I work hand in hand with the Hammond Police Department to try to give us the safest community possible. And if you are serious about your job, about providing a safe community, I think this is a no-brainer. This is about safety. This is about the people that work there, safety for them as well. If my son wanted to work between midnight and 5:00 AM at a gas station, I wouldn't feel safe letting him do that, and I don't think anybody should be put in that position. This is one of the best economies we've had in the United States of America in the last 50 years, right now. Unemployment is as low as it's ever been, right now. I know there's some concern from the council about people that are currently working these jobs. That's a great concern. I totally sympathize with what you're saying. They will find a job! This is the best economy you could ever be looking for a job in, right now! So let's give them a break, get them out of these potentially dangerous situations so they can find another job and make good money. I'm having trouble understanding why anybody wouldn't be for this ordinance, I really am. I'm strongly behind it. I know the Hammond Police Department is strongly behind it. 650-something calls for service, the people that go out and man these calls for service are strongly behind it. Now I need to convince the council to get strongly behind it. I tell you, everybody should be watching this, because I know, I've been elected six times in this city. I know what our residents want. They want a safe city, Hammond Council. They want us to make tough decisions to make it a safe city. If you want to cower behind some fictitious concern, I think this is crazy. This is a no-brainer, guys. We got to make this happen and send a signal to the bad guys. This is not where you do business, not Hammond, Indiana. That's not the way it should go. All due respect, guys, this is an easy decision. I hope in two weeks, when it comes up to third and final, you support the administration and the Hammond Police Department and the Hammond Fire Department. With an ordinance, it's a no-brainer. Does anybody have any questions on this? Because I can go on to the other things, but I see there's a number of people here. I get why there's a lot of concern. I get why the owners of the businesses are sitting in the audience, I get that. Let's keep in mind the tens of thousands of people we represent that are clapping for us right now for doing something that's common sense. Why are you at a gas station at 2:00 in the morning in downtown Hammond? You're not traveling across the country, you're hanging out! And somebody got killed! We need to do things to help the Hammond Police Department. It's not all their fault. We got to do things too, guys! If we are afraid to tackle the tough issues, I don't know why we're doing this job. This is, this is an easy one, in my opinion. So, I'm sorry, but if there's no, no questions on this, I'll move on to the next. Okay? I know you have a judgment bond before you in regards to a case that we talked about in executive session. That's a $9.6 million judgment bond. That's, obviously, we talked about that at great length in executive session. The last council meeting, for those of you who have questions, I talked about this at great length as well. That was a verbal agreement in the James Hill case. July 5th, Councilman Berry brought to my attention today, he's getting a lot of pushback from his residents in the 3rd District. I want to read off this statement from the Hammond Sanitary District. On Wednesday, July 5th, Hammond Sanitary District, City Hammond experienced a major rain event that led to localized flooding and unfortunate basement backups. To start off, before the July 5th rain, on July 2nd, Hammond received 2.5 inches of rain, so the ground was well saturated already, so that on July 5th, when we received, starting at 6:30 PM on July 5th, intense rain fell throughout Hammond, but especially in Hammond's 3rd District. Rain fell in an intensity of 2 inches per hour. The intense rain overwhelmed all sewage system, the sewer system. All pumps and all structures were operating properly. All pumps and all structures were well-maintained. The sewer system is cleaned regularly and had been cleaned in this area recently. We have an approved sewer maintenance program that's monitored. Hammond Sanitary District bought in additional personnel during this event. Keep in mind, our wastewater treatment plan is designed for 48 million gallons a day, and we were treating 69 million gallons during this storm. The CSO basin was discharging at a rate of 500 million gallons during this storm. We had a combined sewer overflow that day, it's a reportable event, we have to report to the United States EPA. We are bypassing the plant, doing everything we can to prevent basement backups, but unfortunately, we had a total of 74 confirmed basement backups in the city of Hammond, and unfortunately for Councilman Tyler, 64 of them happened to be in the 3rd District. So, I apologize to anybody that was affected by this. Obviously, these storms are getting more intense, more frequently. It seems like we'd been dodged, we dodged them since about 2020, we hadn't had basement backups, and then we just got hit again. I know Councilman Berry's feeling the heat, I really feel horrible about what's going on. You know, obviously, our system is doing everything it can to keep up with these new storms, but, anyway. I normally go through my previous couple of weeks, it seems like you guys want to move on with things today. I just want to point out that we had the July 30 event, we had over 700 people attend the Pavilions July 30 event, Visions at Santana played the Summer Concert Series, da-da-da. We did a lot of work in Hessville, it seems like, recently. We had a blight elimination plan meeting with the Hessville Business Association, Councilman Rakels was there, also met to discuss the future of the Little Red Schoolhouse and the redevelopment and reprogramming of Hessville Park, cut the ribbon on Lake, Little Kuyemet River Pedestrian Bridge, appeared on WJOB to discuss the upcoming festival, Key to the City, Dan Rippe, sorry, Festival of the Lakes Launch Party, we've had a lot of stuff going on. Met with the members of the Hammond FOP at the 18th Street Brewery to discuss upcoming contract negotiations. Their contract starts next year, and we're talking about it already, so we'll be dealing with those issues soon, Council. And ran against all of our employees in the roadie run 5K. It's been a busy two weeks, it's going to be the only busier for the next few days coming up. I appreciate everything you guys do. If you don't have any more questions, I apologize about my lengthy report today.
Mayor, you have any questions?
Mr. President. Mayor, in regards to the flooding, I know in the past, we've given support to residents who have had issues, especially with sewage coming up in their basements. Is that something that we're considering doing this time around?
I, I think it's a great idea, Councilman, but more importantly, there's a program run by the Hammond Sanitary District, and this is a disturbing statistic about the people. We monitor floods real closely in this district, we monitor all of our basement backups to see if we have repeat performers, unfortunately, and in this situation, Councilman, out of the 64 houses in the 3rd District that flooded, 48 of them had flooded previously, which is, we offered this 50/50 backflow preventer program, which would eliminate this problem, and I know it's costly for the homeowner. There's a 50/50 program through the Sanitary District, and quite frankly, Councilman, if we were going to do relief, I think that's the best relief we can give anybody, is try to figure out how to, instead of giving them mops, to give them the backflow preventer because this problem will go away with that. It's more expensive than a mop is, but it's, it's a preventer. It's not going to, we're not going to be talking about this again, and we seem like we have repeat performers in, in your neighborhood, in your district, excuse me, and I think we have to, I think that's what we should focus on personally, Councilman, but I'm willing to work with you.
Yeah, no, I agree. I've been personally handing out the mops, so if we, as a administration, can work together to figure out if there's, I don't know if there's more assistance we could help with in set up 50/50, maybe a 75, 25.
I think we should talk about that. I think that should be our goal, Councilman. I love, I mean, the cleaning, that's really nice that you did that. If we're going to be involved as a city and we know that we have consistent problems in this neighborhood, I think that should be our goal, okay? And I'm willing to sit down and talk with you about it, and we can bring the Sanitary District to the table. Thank you, by the way, for bringing all this up and being a good Councilman and monitoring this, so.
Mr. President. The 50/50 program for the backflow preventer, I know you were out there in 2020 by Dowling Park, and our city engineer, Mr. Button, happened to be at one of the residence I was at, and he suggested the backflow preventer, and it is a 50/50 program, and that resident was unaware of it, and when she bought it, she has never been happier.
I know. And the thing is, it's a great program. It's hard to get people to bite that bullet, as Councilman Berry was pointing out, it's, if I remember, it's four or five grand, and it's 50/50, so it's half and half, so the homeowner's out 2,500, but that's still a pretty big bite for a lot of our residents. So, what happens is they clean up, and it goes away for two years, and then two years later, we're back here talking about it again. So, I think if we're going to have a goal, Councilman, that should be the goal.
Or maybe two, I know it's a reimbursement program, so maybe, I don't know if the city can cover our 50% upfront.
Well, this is the Sanitary District program, keep in mind, right?
If HSD can cover their 50%.
Let's, let's get something going with you, me, and the leadership, okay? Thank you, Councilman. I didn't mean to come in hot, Council, I didn't mean to come in hot, but it's, you know, and I realize there's business interests involved, I get that, but there's also people that are losing their lives involved as well, and they don't get to come here and petition whether or not they think the gas station should have stayed open later. I bet the young man that lost his life recently would have wished it closed two hours earlier. We need to, we need to take, make tough decisions, guys, so, and I think it's time that, you know. So anyway, I appreciate you all very much, and if there's no more questions, I'll go ahead and sit down.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Kalwinski.
Thank you. For the mayor, regarding the gas stations, do other cities or towns have similar ordinances?
Thank you, Councilman Mark. We didn't really monitor our neighbors. I know gas stations shut down on their own. For instance, we were talking about Highland earlier, Councilman Mark, and Highland gas station's shut down, I'm not sure if that's voluntary or if it's just done by ordinance. But for instance, in my neighborhood, in my neighborhood, the gas stations voluntarily shut down, and I live in a heavily traveled gas station neighborhood, right? Councilman Warple lives even closer to it than I do. I live right by the 7,500 block of Indianapolis. There's multiple gas stations, probably close to 100 pumps on that street, all right? The gas stations all started closing down at like 11 o'clock, and that place is dead at night, and that's wonderful. You know what? When it's a dead neighborhood and there's nobody around, you see, if there's people hanging out, up to no good, you see it. You don't see it right now because it's so crowded and so busy, and if we start thinning out the neighborhood like that, then it gives the Hammond Police Department a better chance of catching the bad guys, which is what our job is, to help the Hammond Police Department catch the bad guys, so. So, Councilman Mark, I can't answer your question specifically, but I do know that there's a number of gas stations where I live that closed down early, and I do want to point something out, Councilman Mark, I did speak to the owner of a large chain of gas stations throughout Northwest Indiana, and I was ready to hear an airfall, and instead, he was happy. He said, "We're already having staffing problems, I think it's a little dangerous late at night like that anyway, and it sort of levels the playing field. If everybody's shut down, it's a little bit easier than if you're voluntarily shutting down." I was surprised to get that, and it made me happy because I thought he was going to be upset with me, so.
Also, regarding that, what specific criteria will the Board of Works use to deny or grant an exception, and should that be in this ordinance?
Sure, Councilman Mark, I think if you want to add that to the ordinance, factors to consider, we would have no opposition to that at all. I think personally, factors to consider should be, are they really an interstate gas station? Are they close to the toll road? Are they close to 8094? Are they close to Klein Avenue? Do they have a security plan? Are there cops at night? Do you have a security system? What are they, are they good neighbors already? What if we have hardly any calls for service there and they want to open at night? I think that's a factor. So if you wanted to add those to the ordinance, Councilman Mark, I would not be opposed.
And regarding what the gas station owners are willing to do to try to stay open from 12 to 5, have we heard from them to see if there's collaboration about how they would police themselves to make it safer if they were to remain open?
What do you mean, if the ordinance didn't pass?
Right.
If the ordinance didn't pass, it's, it's like it is right now. Everybody gets to decide what they want to do, and there's no ordinance that requires security at night, so the gas station owners that wanted to stay open would have to do nothing, just continue to operate as they have been.
And if the gas station owners organized and came together with a plan on how to make things safer citywide, would that be reasonable to listen to?
I think that that's why we got elected by the residents of Hammond, so that we could come together and make decisions citywide, not the gas station owners, Councilman Mark.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Appreciate it, I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. President. You know, I was going to save my comments for when we got to the ordinance discussion period, but I can ask it now. Yeah, that's the same point I had, as anybody approached the affected business owners and ask them how they feel, maybe they'll voluntarily close, maybe they'll take security measures or add some technology equipment that might help the police, they can do things on their own, but my only problem with this ordinance is, and I believe a lot of them are here, I don't think anybody has approached them, just like, I was surprised by this ordinance when they hit the packet this weekend, and I, other than the articles I saw in the paper, I didn't know that gas stations were the main cause of all this night crime that we're talking about, so.
I don't think it's the main cause. I think the.
It's one cause, then.
I think the bars are the main cause, but we can't regulate them, it's regulated by the state.
But we have no control of bars and liquor stores and that, right?
Yes, sir.
And we have control of gas stations.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, appreciate it, Councilman.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, approval of minutes.
President. Motion to the Senate Minutes on June 26, 2023, be placed on file, please.
Got a motion and a second for approval of minutes. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, approval of claims.
Excuse me, one moment. Mr. President, no, it's, yes, it is, yes, thank you. Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for approval of claims dated 7/3 of '23 and ending 7/5 of '23, claim number 4260 through claim number 4615 inclusive in the amount of $5,516,345.64. I so move.
Second.
A motion and a second for approval of claims, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli. Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson. Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Claims are approved, nine to zero. Next up, public hearing.
Item A, ordinance 23-13 sponsored by Councilman Tyler, and ordinance vacating 145-foot portion of the 5,900 block of Jackson Avenue in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Good evening, Council, President. So, this one's a bit simpler than the other items tonight, but we can't ruminate on why, but this is kind of to fix an anomaly in the plating of the right-ofways in this area. So, just north of Lewis Street and north of Highland Street, there is a 80-foot-wide section platted of Jackson Avenue, 5,900 block. This includes a large, about 40-foot-wide triangular area of grass that Mr. and Mrs. Nunes were here tonight, they have been, them and the owners before them had basically been using it as their yard, but, you know, for some reason, it's platted as a right-ofway. This area was platted in the 1890s and again in the 1910s, so I can't guess as to why, but basically, the city engineers reviewed it, he said there's no opportunity to expand the roadway here, it should not affect anything, and he's okay with it. So this will not affect the sidewalks or the streets, it is just a grassy area to the west of where Jackson Avenue runs northerly here.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Any questions? Is there any public comment on ordinance 23-13? Any comment? Public hearing is closed. Next up, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
We all received an email from Mr. George Stoya pertaining to ordinance 2316 today, and I make a motion that it is duly noted and placed on file.
Second.
A motion and a second to place on file, the letter from George Stoya. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any other communications? Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Tyler.
On Saturday, July 29th, at the Hammond Sportsplex, there will be a free basketball camp for boys and girls ages seven through 21. During the morning, there'll be a youth camp and training session, and in the afternoon, there will be a 3-on-3 contest and a 1-on-1 contest, there'll be prizes, t-shirts, food. This is sponsored by myself and the family of Teyon McCoy, who passed away recently. His family wants to do something to honor his memory, and so hopefully, the community will come out, I think it'll be a great time for kids who are interested in the game of basketball, no matter what their skill level, to come out and have some fun, have some free food, and then learn about Mr. McCoy and what he meant to the city of Hammond. So once again, that's Saturday, July 29th, for ages seven through 21, it'll start at 10:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Sorry, Mr. President, got one more. I don't know if we've announced this already, but on August 2nd, the school City Hammond is having their back-to-school celebration from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM just across the street at Hammond Central High School. They'll be giving away school supplies, immunizations, you can register for school, they'll have games, food, music, haircuts, health professionals, dentists, vendors, and more. If you want to be a part of that event, if you want to volunteer or sign up as a vendor, you can call 219-933-2400. And once again, it's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and that's open to any student, and they'll give away supplies as much as they have until everything is gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Next up, committee reports.
Mr. President. Capitol Improvement Board, met on July 5th, 2023. Allocations approved were $44,885.66 to J.J. Newell for the sidewalk program, a funding allocation for the Kennedy Avenue Road Diet Supplemental Design, first group engineering in the amount of $33,100. Summer Street Advanced Clearing Howard's Tree in the amount of $9,000. And finally, a funding allocation for the Citywide Striping Traffic Management Company in the amount of $100,000 was approved. Thank you.
Mr. President. Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming Community and Crime Watch meetings. On Wednesday, July 12th, Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will meet at 1:00 PM. The East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, July 18th, 6:00 PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch will not meet until September, when school reopens. Harrison Park Crime Watch is going to have a block party from 12:00 to 4:00 PM on July 22nd at Harrison Park. Their next scheduled Crime Watch meeting is August 8th, and that is at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Hessville Crime Watch will not meet in July. Irving Community Watch will meet in September, when school reopens. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will have their semi-annual meeting around September, October, and I will announce that at an upcoming meeting. The Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, July 13th, 6:30 PM at the Kuyemet College. Every. Every meeting, I urge our residents to come to our Community and Crime Watch meetings. That's how you find out what is happening in your neighborhood. The ordinance before us tonight came out of statistics that we heard at a Crime Watch meeting in our neighborhood. Things that were going on in our neighborhood. And for the safety of our neighborhood and our residents, we will always look out for their safety, always. So I urge everyone to come to a Community or Crime Watch meeting and learn about what is happening in your neighborhood, because community is not just about me. It's about us. It's about all of us. I would like to make one more announcement. Fireworks are officially over. July ninth was yesterday. There should be no more fireworks in your neighborhood. If you have a specific address, contact the police department. They can't follow the smoke. They've got to have an address. So be sure to call nine-one-one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, council as a whole be bringing out twenty-three thirteen for third and final passage.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any reports is closed. Next up, ordinance third and final reading passage.
Ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen sponsored by Councilwoman Tyler. An ordinance vacating a vacating and one hundred and forty-five foot portion of the fifty-nine-hundred block of Jackson Avenue in the city of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I move for third reading and final passage of ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Passage twenty-three dash thirteen. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Passes nine to zero. Next up, introduction of ordinances.
Item A. Ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spatelli.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for first and second reading of twenty-three fourteen, referred to council as a whole on July twenty-fourth at five p.m. with a public hearing on July twenty-fourth.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for twenty-three dash fourteen, first and second reading, public hearing on July twenty-fourth. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes, this is an appropriation for nine million, six hundred thousand dollars. The cost of a judgment with Mr. James Hall.
Any other discussion? There is a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Can we ask how this is going to affect our residents once this goes into play?
Mr. President.
Exit. Exit.
Yeah, we'll have, Kevin. So as a reminder to the council, this is a case emanating from nineteen-eighty-one rape case. You know, the gentleman did almost eighteen years in prison, sued the city on being cleared by DNA. Verdict entered against the city, twenty-five million dollars. We negotiated it down to nine million dollars. Obviously, this is not wonderful. I think it's a completely reasonable question. I'll have Kevin come forward, corporate counsel, to explain how this affects the Hammond taxpayers.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to the council. Specifically, this will be a fifteen-year judgment bond. It, the effect on a homeowner at the maximum end will be five dollars and forty-four cents per year, and the low end will be zero, depending on your assessed value. However, the low end of anybody paying will be two dollars and eighty cents per year. It adds three cents onto the property tax rate, so it's very minimal. It's an under one percent increase.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'm here just in cases.
Any discussion?
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski. Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. Maybe Kevin or the mayor can answer this question. Are other cases, without naming them, pending against the city which may result in large liability judgments or settlements in our future that we're aware of?
Um, Councilman Kowinski. I bet you there's over fifty pending cases against the city of Hammond right now. We, the city, if somebody falls and trips on a sidewalk and slams their face on the sidewalk, the city of Hammond gets sued. If there's car crashes in the city of Hammond, sometimes they allege that we did something wrong with the streets, so there's a number of cases pending at all times against the city of Hammond. That's always been the case. Probably always will be the case. But as far as large police verdicts, there's a couple of cases we're monitoring. This is, in my opinion, this is one of the big two that we got rid of. We've gotten rid of both of them now. The other cases are concerning, but not nearly is. I don't think there's any type of liability like we've been facing with the previous two cases, Councilman Mark.
Well, thank you. Also, I know that we're self-insured, but is insurance available or any kind of protection to the city from liability or losses that we can purchase, given that, what if we had a hundred million dollar judgment against us? Is there, is there place to go besides our self-insurance to help us protect the city's future?
I mean, there's insurance for everything, Councilman Mark. I'm sure there's this type of insurance out there, but, you know, any type of insurance that gives you a hundred million dollars worth of coverage is going to cost you at least a million or two, in my opinion, every year, at least, probably even more. So I think that if you're looking for that type of coverage, it's going to be cost prohibitive, but we are self-insured. Typically, most, most cases result in a verdict of less than six figures. This one was the exception, obviously. But we knew this case. We've all been talking about it. Councilman Mark, I know you've been a councilman for as long as I've been the mayor. We've been monitoring this case, and this was the, the other tough case that we, you know, that we fought our way through and ultimately settled was the Larry Mays case. That case was settled. This James Hill case is hopefully going to be settled now, once, you know, if the council goes along with this judgment bond. And in my opinion, Councilman Mark, the major liability cases are out of the way at that point. We have a couple of other cases we're monitoring, but I recently spoke with our litigation attorneys, and they're not as concerned with the other two cases we're monitoring as they are with this one. These, this is the last of the nineteen-eighties cases. How about that? I was eleven.
Thank you, May.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I was eleven years old when this happened. You know, Councilman Barry wasn't even born yet, so we're dealing with things that happened a long time ago. It's part of our job. It's not wonderful. I think nobody's happy about this. I do want to say to the Hammond council, I got an opportunity to speak to Mr. Hill. I apologize on behalf of the city of Hammond. We had a heart-to-heart. I think it made a difference. I, you know, obviously, I feel horrible about everything that happened to him. I think this is good compensation for, you know, being wrongfully convicted. I hope it's good compensation. His attorneys felt it was fair, so.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Bottom line to this is, is we're ordered by a court to pay twenty-five million dollars, correct?
Councilman Dave, if for some reason this fell apart, this is what we were facing. We were going to the Seventh Circuit on appeal. We were appealing a twenty-five million dollar verdict. Interest was ticking. We were losing about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a month on interest alone, okay, on a twenty-five million dollar verdict. So if we appealed for two years, do the math, you're talking a couple of million dollars in interest, right? And we were hanging our hat on. We thought we would be successful at the Seventh Circuit. We had great lawyers. We had great argument. And I felt Seventh Circuit was the right venue for us, but we were taking a big gamble. If it didn't go as we planned, our only option would have been the U.S. Supreme Court, and that's like a lightning strike to appear before them. And if we failed at Seventh Circuit, we'd be facing a twenty-seven, twenty-eight million dollar verdict with interest. I think that this was, and by the way, on the other side, it was Attorney King representing Mr. Hill, and their office had a twenty-five million dollar verdict, and they settled for nine million. So they knew there was risk in the Seventh Circuit as well. You know, so they didn't want to take the chance that maybe we did win in the Seventh Circuit, and that verdict gets turned into a zero, and we start all over again, right? So there was risk on all sides, and usually in cases like that, you could arrive at a good number. I think this is a fair number. I really do. I think I wasn't thrilled with it. It was much higher than I wanted to pay, and Mr. Hill certainly wasn't thrilled with it. It was much less than he wanted to make. Usually, results like that are the best deals, so. I know this is a tough issue, guys. Believe me, I've been complaining about it for the last five years. We've been litigating, you know. I was eleven years old when this started, but it's been a big problem for a long time, and it's almost over, so I hope you can support us on this.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call on the introduction of twenty-three dash fourteen.
An appropriation ordinance, city of Hammond, Indiana, a general obligation judgment funding bonds. Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli. Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Passes nine to zero. Also, before we go on, anybody wishing to address the council under public expression, people coming up here to sign your name. At the end of the meeting, there is a public expression time where you'd be allowed to speak. All right, moving on.
Item B, ordinance twenty-three dash fifteen sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spatelli. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to be applied to pay cost of a judgment and/or settlement owed by the city and incidental expenses in connection therewith and on account of the issuance of the bonds. Other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for first and second reading of twenty-three fifteen with a committee meeting, council as a whole, on July twenty-fourth at five p.m.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, this ordinance authorizes the issuances, the issuance of the bonds for the nine point six million dollars in the James Hill case. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Discussion. Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Passes nine to zero. Next up.
Item C. Ordinance twenty-three dash sixteen sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spatelli. An ordinance regulating the hours of operation of automobile fueling stations within the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for first and second reading of twenty-three sixteen, referred to council as a whole with a committee meeting at four p.m. on July twenty-fourth. I so move.
Second.
So we have a motion to prove second, first and second reading with the council, refer to council as a whole on July twenty-fourth, four p.m. Committee meeting. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor.
Just so everybody in the audience understands, we all know, because we do these meetings all the time, first and second reading is typical. Nothing really happens between first and second reading. But third and final reading, when we go for that, that's when ordinances get passed. So this period that we're in now, which is two weeks at least, is a period where if changes are going to be made to the ordinance, changes will be made, so it's a good opportunity for us to listen to feedback and recommendations, and if recommendations come up that make the ordinance stronger, we could change it in the next two weeks. So I don't want anybody coming here to think that this is happening right now. It's not. This is all like procedural. First and second is just formality for the most part. Third and final is when we make that, that's when you're passing an ordinance. So I wanted to point that out to the audience so that they understand what's going on. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I would like to just go with Councilwoman Vines's proposal for first and second reading, but I don't think one hour before the next council meeting is enough time, because these people that are about to speak to us have three minutes, and we can't interact with them to ask questions. And I propose we do the committee as a whole meeting on Thursday, July twentieth, at whatever time works for everybody to be there. If nobody has any objection to it. I just propose that we have the public here, the committee as a, or the council as a whole meeting on July twentieth, the Thursday before the next meeting. That way, the public can come. They've got longer than three minutes, and we actually have the opportunity to interact and ask questions. If nobody has any objection to that.
I can't be there that day, but I could make sure members of the administration are there, so it's not important if I'm there or not, but I, I don't want anybody to think I'm blowing you off if I'm not there. I'm going to, you know.
Or whatever works. I just think one hour before. I mean, they're going to speak for three minutes, and we can't ask no questions, and I don't.
No, I have no problem with that. I agree, by the way. I don't think if this is, you know, obviously, there's a lot of people concerned about this. I think doing it right before a council meeting is real bad, so.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, my intention for requesting the committee meeting at four p.m. was so we would be able to air our concerns. And then, if we needed to come back at another time, we would be able to, because there's, there's no guarantee that this ordinance is going to pass at the next meeting, given the discussion that everyone, I'm assuming, would like to have. I just thought that by limiting it to one hour before the next meeting that we would be able to gather some thoughts and then have some discussion at a later date. But I'm open to anything.
Mr. President. Councilwoman Alexander.
Thank you. First of all, my condolences to that family, because I don't want any of my comments to seem like they're insecure, um, in, you know, the word I'm looking for. But as from my understanding, that we do have thirty-six to thirty-seven gas stations in our city, and approximately sixteen of them are open twenty-four hours. So my question, Mayor, and I wanted to put it under this portion, not the beginning, just so it falls right in the category. First question is, one, with us making this change, if we did pass this change, one question is, and it's probably going to be also from the owners, is one is how it's going to affect their employees. Another question.
Well, could, could we go one at a time, Councilwoman?
Sure, go ahead.
I, that would be, we could insert that in the next couple of weeks into the ordinance. If you guys are more comfortable allowing a phase-in, insert it into the ordinance. This ordinance can be modified, as you all know. So if you would all feel more comfortable saying October first, put October first in there. November first, whatever, like to give everybody an opportunity to get ready for this. I have no problem with that. Right now, as written, I think it would take place after you all, if it was approved. So if you want to insert that, Councilwoman, that makes sense to get everybody an opportunity to get ready for it.
Okay. Next question is, out of the gas stations that are open over midnight, and I know that you just provided us with some data, before even thinking about agreeing to this, we need more data, even from even the gas stations, for instance, on what instances are happening between the hours. between the hours of 12 and 5 that could affect what we're talking about here today. So if there's statistical data from the police department that you can provide to us, I know that we talked about it, but like I said, I want to make sure all these things are on record, that we have that statistical data that can back this up, because currently, just like Councilman Torres, I heard it from the news, I got it in the packet, and I definitely want to give more time and consideration to something that's so delicate. It's delicate for multiple reasons, it's delicate because we had a death in the city, but we also have crime all throughout the city, and I understand public safety is definitely important, so if we can get those statistical numbers from our police, and maybe even from our gas station owners, on what happens during those hours, and if that data does not line up, of course, we can make modifications, but if there's only 16 open, and let's say only 1% is having a major issue, does that deem for us to make this ordinance pass? You have something to say on that before I go on?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, other thing is, how many issues have happened where it was employees involved at the actual workplace is a concern of mine? Because it definitely, if there's issues with things happening with our, their employees, then definitely, we want to see how we can help rectify that. And another solution that I thought of was that maybe we add into this, is maybe we require them to have armed security guards at the facility to help facilitate with some issues, because it is open overnight. But my next question is, if they close overnight, how are we going to help make sure that their business is secure? I understand we can ask them for cameras and things like that, but if they're used to having business going through overnight, that means some of them probably have less issues going on, but what will happen once that business is closed overnight? Will it cause for more issues to happen, such as break-ins and things like that?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warple.
This goes back to my original proposal of doing it on a day where we have longer than an hour to talk about it, and we can do both. We can have a meeting on the 20th, and let the public come, and the gas station owners come, and we, again, they're going to come up and speak for three minutes, we can't ask no question, or respond to any answers, so we can do both. We can have the public hearing on July 20th, and have a committee, I mean, not a public hearing, a committee hearing on July 20th, and we can do like we did before, and schedule another committee hearing. I just feel like this issue is strong enough that we need to hear more than three minutes from everybody, and not be able to ask questions.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Warple.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to say that, like everybody else, I don't think anybody here wants to be in the way of affecting public safety, and if we can find ways of reducing crime, and if this ordinance does it, is good ordinance. But these station owners, gas station owners that are here now, I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules, to let them speak now, for a limited time, if I can get a second, for the ones that are here.
Second. All right, there's a motion and a second, what is your motion?
To suspend the rules, to let the gas station owners that want to speak, speak.
Now, instead of at 4:00?
Well, I'd like to hear what their issues are now.
Mr. President.
They're either, some are for it, and some are against it, so I like to...
Right now, we're in first and second reading.
Yes.
We're in first and second reading, and we're trying to pass...
I'm sure, Mr. President, I'm sure all of them are not going to speak, if we can just get an idea.
Mr. President, point of order, I guess. Are we making a motion to move public expression up, and letting them say their three minutes now, because all this is, is an introduction of ordinance, in the, I mean, first and second reading, to start the process of having a committee hearing, so we can have these questions and answers answered. Now, like I said, public expression's going to give them three minutes, it doesn't change the fact that, let's start the process.
Mr. President, I got a motion on the floor, and I got a second, call it to a vote.
Okay, we got a call for the vote. A motion to suspend the rules, to allow expression of the first and second reading on 23-16.
What's the timeframe on that?
We've got a motion to suspend the rules right now.
Let's vote.
Clark Olick.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli. Vinesz.
No.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
No.
Warple.
No.
Rakos.
No.
Mr. President.
So, to suspend the rules, we needed more, we needed what?
Need six.
Not for all suspensions of the rules, for some you do.
So, what was the, what was the, the number? Clark Olick.
6, 0, 3, S.
So we're not going to suspend the rules, fails. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vinesz.
Given our discussion here, I would like to amend my motion, that our council as a whole meeting be on July 20th. Mayor, did you said you would be able to make that date?
I don't believe I could make that one, but that doesn't, just set it, if I can't make it, somebody...
July 20th, 4:00 PM, here in the council chambers, and a, and then a second committee as a whole meeting on July 24th at 4:00 PM, as a continuation of the July 20th meeting. I, if I could, real quick, I would just like to make clear that my no vote on suspending the rules is not an effort to stifle anyone from speaking their mind, but we do have public expression expressly for the whomever, the residents, business owners, whomever, to speak during public expression. That was the reason for my no vote, so, Mr. President, I so move.
So we have an amendment to the motion.
Second.
Do we have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Vote on the amendment to the motion?
No, she just, no.
What was the second?
She withdrew her, she withdrew her original, and put in that July 20th and July 24th were good to vote on the motion, if that's the end of discussion.
Mr. President. I amended my motion.
What was the time on that, for 20th?
4:00 PM.
So we have amendment on the motion?
No, no, no.
For the timeframe.
So you need a second.
And Warple gave a second.
Okay.
Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor?
Mr. President.
Roll call.
Roll call.
No.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vinesz.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. So we still have the motion, 23-16, but the amended part is, the committee meeting, council as a whole, is at July 20th at 4:00 PM, and July 24th at 4:00 PM. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Yeah, my reason for suspending the rules was to, public expression comes after the ordinance is voted on, even though it's first and second, so just to hear their views on it before I voted on it, but it didn't pass, so, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just echo some of the concerns, questions that others have shared, just in terms of how this will impact gas stations, revenue, jobs, and I know that's not the most important issue, the most important issue, as Mayor stated, is the safety of our city, and so I just want to make sure that we just have time to review the data, and any more information that our police department can share with us, in terms of the incidents that have happened, and if we have a breakdown of which gas stations are happening at, I know we're not going to make a decision based off one gas station versus another, this will be a blanket ordinance, but we'd still like to see how it breaks down across our entire city. And my mom is in the audience, and I, so I used to be a gas station employee, and I shared this earlier, I worked that 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM shift, and so I'm calling on personal experience, and granted, it wasn't in Hammond, I was in a college town in Crawfordsville, Indiana, where I attended Wabash, but I know that that was the only time that I could work, it was really the only job that I could do, based off, I was a college football player, I was trying to focus on my studies, had other extracurricular activities, I was trying to be a leader within, and so I know that there are plenty of people who have also reached out to some of us on the council, in terms of how this will impact them, and I know, we talked about this earlier, Mayor, but your administration has shared that you would be supportive in helping those people find other jobs, so as long as we can, I don't know if that needs to be written into the ordinance, but just want to go on record to share that, that our city will be a resource for those folks, and also work with the gas stations to make sure the ones that are going to stay open past midnight do so, so that they can ensure the safety of the residents, and people who are stopping by those businesses, is just something I just wanted to discuss, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. President, working the 10 to 6 in Wabash, Wabash is a wonderful community, you know, is a lot different, and all due respect, than working the 10 to 6 in Hammond, Indiana, in the modern day and age, with guns everywhere, just a lot different. I mean, all due respect, I worked crazy hours when I was a kid too, and I respect Councilman Barry, and his work ethic, and his input, but the fact is, you know, when people get murdered in our city, I don't know if they call council people, but they call mayors. You get emails from the family, you know, you feel like you failed your city when somebody gets killed at a gas station, I feel like I failed, I have nothing to do with the gas station's security, but we do have power, guys, we have power to regulate things like that, and if we did exercise that power, there'd be 650 fewer calls. And I guarantee you, if I stood up here and I said there's over 190 calls for service at a bar, I know how you guys would feel, but I have over 190 calls for service at gas stations, and it's like, oh my God, we can't touch that, it's the same thing. Thank you all.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman McWinsky.
Thank you, to piggyback on Councilman Tyler's comments, probably if this is going to pass, perhaps a job fair date should be placed in the ordinance prior to the ordinance's effectiveness, or effective date, just an idea, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we do have a job fair every year, I would have no problem with including, we do have a job fair in the City of Hammond every year, it's run by our economic development department, so that would be easy to do.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
No.
Spatelli. Vinesz.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Pass is 23-16, passes, passes 8-1.
President Rakos, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you. We want to finish business, intent to consider goes away, because it's already passed. Public expression, okay, we'll bring it up the list, you'll be called, we ask you to give your name and your address, and you'll, we have a timer, three minutes, so at three minutes, the timer will go off, and then you can end your conference. I have to read the handwriting, my handwriting is worse than most, so. Tammy? I'm not sure, the first one that...
That's me. Hi. Hi, I'd like to address you guys.
Give us your name and your address.
Tammy Alhouson, I'm 15.4 in Indianapolis Boulevard. I'm a business owner myself, I'm here in support of our community and our business owners, I understand the mayor's point of view of being a safe community, which is great, we all want to live in a safe community, however, we can't stop things from happening, and I believe to put ordinances on businesses, on the gas station, what's going to come next to make it safety for the rest of the City of Hammond? Is it going to come after the rest of the businesses, and put ordinances on all, every business in the city? I mean, we have a freedom, we have rights, and our constitutional rights say that they're allowed to operate their business the way they see fit, they cannot help that somebody was driving their station, or robbed their station, and I agree with the councilwoman about the being closed, what's going to happen to their businesses when they're closed? Up and down Boulevard, we have major break-ins not, not too long ago, coming in and just driving in, breaking in Dunkin' Donuts, breaking in the pizza shop, up and down the Boulevard. We can't stop them, that's broad daylight. One of the robberies happened while I was sitting at my desk, I watched the people go in the store, I didn't know they were robbing it, and they left. Dunkin' Donuts can't be responsible for that, nobody can be responsible for somebody else's actions, and it's not our right to say what's good for me, or what's good for you, or what's good for the general public. We can all agree to disagree, however, saying that, hey, you got to operate your business during these hours, that's wrong, you're going to hurt their families, their business. They know what they have to work for, they know what they have to do, to make their bills, to do all the things they have to do, so it's not right, in my opinion, it's not right, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next up, Jim Witham.
My name is Jim Witham, 6435 Howard, Hammond, Indiana. I want to thank Ms. Alexander and Barry Taylor, I think, Alexander, you hit a number of things right on, I won't go into those, I think what you need to do is understand, you're going to cause other problems for yourselves and our employees, you're going to cause, there's going to be more break-ins, because you won't have anybody there, I would like to see you add more squads or something, with about a 15-minute interval, checking those businesses between that time of midnight to 4:00, you're going to have problems with employees coming in at 4:00, the robbers, or whoever, are going to go in with them, they're going to put them in harm's way, so you've got, you've opened up a can of worms. My stores, I never had them open till mid, I wonder I had it open till midnight, that was my choice. These other people do good business, they are competitive, they make your lives easier, there's no excuse for this, I'm sorry, there's no excuse for this law. I don't say, I don't want anybody killed, I don't want anybody harmed, I had one employee hit, and put in the back room, it's not fun, it's not, it's not a good sign. The police were very good, as far as if a woman came in, wanted to come, had come in at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, she was afraid, they would come and escort her in, as well as escort her out at 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock at night. I think you guys are off-base, it's just my feeling, and you can take it for what it was, our businesses were broke into, I was up at 4:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning, I went in, had to clean up glass, we learned a lot, but we ended up with bars on the windows, we had to put bars on the doors, so they wouldn't break in, we had to put bulletproof glass in, we took care, we tried to take care of our employees, and make sure that they were taken care of properly, and I really appreciate what you had to say, that's, I don't need to go any farther, I think, but I, I will say one more thing, I think a meeting with each individual... I think a meeting with each individual where we can have give and take information before this is passed, and that, because I could go on probably for a half hour or more, but three minutes is not enough, and no feedback from you. I have no idea where you're at, what your thinking is, why you're thinking is. I understand a little bit of where the mayor is, but I think all businesses, I think, these people are going to move from our place or a gas station to Walmart, they should close at midnight. Everybody should close at midnight. He said the bars, we've had killings in the bars. We, but if you can't do it, you can't do it. It's ridiculous.
Quabona Basuli. KWA B O N A is the way I read it. B A S U L I.
Thank you. That was, that was pretty good. Quabona Razuli, 3724 Mississippi Street. I work with Concerned Citizens Against Violence also to clear the airways project, and I appreciate, you know, this administration, the city try to do what they can to quell some of this violence that's occurring, not only in Hammond, but in the Chicagoland area, and really all over the country, as we know, it's been so many mass shootings, and, and I think United States set a record in like 2021 with over 20,000 homicides, uh, in the Chicago area. And it's just been out of control, as we all know, Chicago is pretty much the poster child for violence in this whole country right now, and we're part of that Chicagoland area, of course, as we all know. So as we deal with this and debate this and this issue of shutting down these gas stations here in Hammond, we have to understand that less than a quarter mile from here, right on the same street, exists one of the worst, most violent, vulgar, vicious radio stations in the entire country that spews nothing but violence and porn and all sorts of disrespect and hate in the music they play, 24/7/365. Midnight, eight o'clock in the morning, nine o'clock in the morning on Sunday morning, WPWX Power 92.3 just plays nothing but poison. All you have to do is just listen to it yourself. We've been down there several times, having protests and demonstration, pleading with them, asking them, demanding that they stop this. They constantly violate FCC decency standards, that say between nine o'clock in the morning and, and, I'm sorry, between six o'clock in the morning and 10 o'clock at night, you cannot play profane and indecent content, even though they expect, they respect the Constitution's First Amendment rights to free speech. They said because our children may be listening, you, you can't be doing this. However, they do let them get away with it. And then they say that obscene content is never allowed. However, they play obscene content, 24/7/365. So that is one way that we can not just help quell the violence in Hammond, but in Chicago, because the station goes across the state line, In Gary, all over the place, because that's what they do 24/7. I would ask you all to just to take a listen, and maybe take a listen with your children or with your young folks, and they'll explain to you some of the lyrics that are being spewed. Another hypocritical issue is that we're having a concert this week with an artist named Lil Wayne. And Lil Wayne is just, I mean, here's some of the lyrics from one of his songs that was advertised as we promote this concert. It's called "My Millie." Good beat, kind of funky lyrics, drops, dropping in bombs, that use, that means using the N-word, calling out women bees. He says on one line here about popping, I just had it up, I know my time is running here, oh, here we go. Uh, tell the choppers, and a chopper is a gun, automatic gun, ha, 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 you can't catch them, you can't stop them. I go by them goon rules. If you can't beat them, then you pop them. If you can't man them, then you pop them. If you can't stand them, then you drop them. So pop is to shoot them and drop is to knock them down. And then he goes on to talk about how his Glock has gone crazy, and that's just one song. So just look up any of his lyrics. So we have to stop that practice of bringing in these violent, vulgar, misogynistic, self-hating rappers and other artists to our community also to perform concerts that affect our people constantly too. So again, I applaud the city for dealing with this issue, but again, we have to do something with this music and this media and right down the street.
Thank you, sir.
Right here, we have one of the worst stations in the whole country spewing violence to our children.
Sir, sir, thank you. Next up, Maureen Frank, I believe.
Yes, my name is Maureen Frank. I live at 6619 Van Buren, Hammond. Um, I am Bennett, I was a taxi cab driver and I worked nights. I was a Luber, Huber driver, a lift driver. And I, and I also drove a sweeper truck cleaning parking lots. And, um, in the middle of the night, sometimes you need to stop and get gas. And sometimes if you felt like you were going to get followed, you would pull into a gas station, because I was a safe haven, because there's people there. You could call for help if you needed help with the police or something. You know, if you're traveling and you're coming home from a relative's house at one or two o'clock in the morning, you, and you need, and you felt like you were getting followed, you would pull into a gas station and call for help. Or you would get air in a tire, if you needed to get air in a tire or something. You can't always close all the gas stations, and she was right. If you do close up all the gas stations, there is going to be more violence, there are going to be more break-ins, because it gives people opportunities as a steal. I mean, there's armored trucks that get robbed in the middle of broad daylight. You go over to Jewel's Parking Lot, the elderly women were getting robbed, putting their groceries in the car. I mean, you have to realize what's going on here. I mean, you can't close all the gas stations. You could probably close some of them that are closer to the state line or something, if you, where there's more crime going on, but the ones that are further inward, like the Speedway on Chicago and, and, um, Calumet Avenue. If you're driving a truck and you need to get diesel fuel, you have to get some kind of gas, because it's right by this, the, um, um, toll road. And if you're driving a sweeper truck in the middle of the night, you need to get some gas somewhere too, and, or if you're out there plowing snow. You want your parking lots cleaned and everything else. These trucks can't keep going and going and going 24 hours a day without any fuel. And people need their jobs. I, I don't know what else to say. I mean, I, to me, I feel safer going to a gas station than during the day. You know how many people are lurking around the gas station during the day, looking to see if they could rob you or something? I feel safer going at night than I do during the day, because you're more alert of what your surroundings during, at night than you are during the day. We just take everything for granted during the day, and that goes for almost all of us. We don't always pay attention what's going on around us during the day. There's more home invasions during the day than there is at night. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mike Howard. Miles, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I was sloppy with my curse. Uh, 961 Michigan. Um, I came up here thinking that I'd be able to say a lot, uh, but, uh, our mayor here, Thomas McRae, made quite a bit of, uh, good points. Uh, yes, not every, like, he, he pointed out the violence that happens at gas stations. Um, but he also pointed out that over by his house, there's not many, there's not, not much happens at those gas stations. And over there in Indianapolis, where he described, 75th and Indianapolis, there is still gas stations that stay open, and violence doesn't really happen there. And that was my mother, who is just here on the stand, uh, like she pointed out, that is a safe spot, uh, for anybody driving. Uh, a gas station is, like, where are you supposed to go if you're, if you feel like you're in danger? Are you supposed to go home? No. That makes you in more danger. A gas station is a nice place to go and stuff. Uh, most of our crime, I did my research, I have the, I have my paperwork and everything, uh, happens over here on the northwest side of Hammond, not the northeast side of Hammond. So I understand closing of gas stations over here on, more towards the state line border, um, but the inner gas stations would be a better place. And like, to a lot of people, even if they don't have a car, that is somebody that, somewhere they can go to maybe get a gallon of milk when they need a gallon of milk. It's, it's, it's another place to go when you got to get something, um, a safe haven, if you will. And I also wanted to point out, you brought up the 70-25 instead of the 20, or the 50-50. I know this is a different thing to talk about. Am I allowed to do that? I don't know. But, uh, with the, with the damages that just happened with the overflow of the Hammond Works, like the Hammond Water Works, uh, and, uh, that, uh, the plan to help out, uh, houses in need and stuff that were damaged because maybe it was a failure with the Hammond Water Works or just failure with their sub-pump. A lot of people don't know about that relief program that was spoken about with the 50-50, and, uh, even that 50-50 wasn't great enough. The 70-25 does sound like a great act. I'd love to put that out there. And, um, I mean, I guess that's all I can say. Uh, I come as a delivery driver who has had to be in the middle of the night getting gas, or, or, or I was the person plowing your snow. I would, I, in the middle of the night, we work 24-hour shifts when it snows that bad, and, uh, I'll let the timer tick me out.
Thank you. Okay, we have Pat from Woodmar.
Could you state your name for us? Any address, please?
Hey, uh, my name's Pat, and, uh, I'm from Woodmar. Um, hello, Mayor.
Really?
Uh, my name is Pat, and, um, you know that after hearing that testimony, it just shows, uh, to me that you know, uh, Hammond is really not headed in a good direction, because after my experience a couple nights ago, I had a very terrible experience where I think these casinos, particularly the Horseshoe, take advantage of people by giving them free drinks. What I'm saying is that these casinos give people free drinks and then they become vulnerable and end up gambling more money than they have. Yeah, I was a victim of that, and I lost a lot of money, and I'm facing a lot of issues right now. My wife's boyfriend recently got her pregnant, and I'm here for a church event. Uh, I'm speaking for, I'm a member of the Church of Scientology, and I don't normally drink, but I'm very vulnerable and in a position now where, um, I don't know what I'm going to do, because financially, I'm going to have to take care of this baby potentially, because, um, he's on parole right now, he's out on parole, and he has an upcoming case where he could be facing a long time in jail. So potentially, I'm going to have to be financially supporting this baby, and I come to Hammond for a work event, and I get fed alcohol, and I, and I get entirely way too intoxicated. I go to the ATM to use my credit card. They make it very accessible to be able to gamble in my credit card, and you know this, Mayor Tom. They, they make it absolutely incredibly accessible, Councilman, uh, to be able to take all I have. And now I have to go back to Clearwater, Florida, and I have nothing. So after this, after I start drinking, I'm very distraught, and then the one good thing I could say about the city, the one commend, commendation I can make, is that out of all the cities I've been to, this is the first city, last night at 4:00 AM, I saw multiple people on State Line Avenue taking the vaccine, and that's the only place I've seen a 24/7 vaccine operation in the United States of America, and that's here in Hammond. I saw lots of people on State Line Avenue doing the vaccine, and I want to commend you for that one thing, but the vulnerability of tourists that come here like myself, you're preying on people like me, and I end up meeting a nice Filipino girl, and I take her back to my hotel room, come to find out, it costs money for her service, take her up to my room. Mayor Tom, I end up having a good time, we start kissing, take off clothes, she has male genitalia, she's a transgender. So I'm very confused. I don't know what to do. And I'm also very confused about why we would close gas stations at midnight without also including the casinos in this reform. People will still come from Illinois to come to all the casinos, uh, and possibly be taken advantage of or have an experience like mine. We, we need to keep the gas stations open, or we need all the businesses with potential risks like casinos, strip clubs, and bars to close too. This is discriminatory to gas stations as businesses, they're being punished for a crime at night and uncalled for by them. It's also worth noting that the agenda for these meetings isn't posted usually until after the fact or the day of online, and a more well-informed public concerning meeting times, an agenda would fortify the political process for civic participation in the community. Many gas station employees are not from Hammond, even if so, don't have, uh, don't know that this is even being discussed today. If you would, it would be beneficial to the community for the council to post the agenda in an easy-to-find online place a few days prior, as early as possible for council meetings. I was, I called today for the agenda and was told I would receive one, uh, I would receive one in an email, and that they're posted online, that they're not posted online until the day of. I didn't receive that email. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pat. Um, next up, Jajit Singh, Singh, S-I-N-G-H. I don't know how to pronounce your first name. Singh? Essa Allison, 355169. On 3707, that's the gas station address, is correct?
Yes. My name's Vanessa. I've been employed at Sitco Gas Station in All-Star for nine years. Really, not no problems, but who's going to pay for the vandalizing to the pumps when the stores are closed? Us owners are. What about the windows getting broke? Who's going to pay that? How are we supposed to get our deliveries that are delivered at nighttime, and the drivers will not come back because our hours are closed?
Jason, I don't, I have no idea what the last name is.
Jason Ingram. Hi. Hello. My name is Jason Ingram. I live at 344163rd Street. Um, I am the district manager for Speedway. I oversee 15, uh, locations in the northwest Indiana, Market, Hammond, Munster, Sherrville, St. John, um, and Griffith. At four inside of Hammond, everything that happens at my gas stations in Hammond happened at my gas station in St. John, Sherrville, all that. Um, I know he had, Mayor Tom had said earlier, he doesn't know how many people go to a gas station between that time, while in the month of June, we had 20,151 transactions between midnight and 5:00 AM between four gas stations. $403,000 in revenue. If we were to close between this time, that would lose 750 hours of our employees that are all residents of Hammond, and cost them $9,375. So that's some of the statistics for you. Um, of these four gas stations that I've been overseeing for two and a half years, the most tenured manager I have, um, as I believe her name was Monica, previously, say, uh, was Calumetting, Chicago Avenue, her name's Loretta, been running it for 20 years, has had two incidences where there has been a firearm involved, both in the middle of the day, nothing at night. All of our employees are behind bullet-resistant glass with panic buttons directly monitored by our corporate offices. I've had employees who have been with us for 20 years working this shift. No one shoots. We have a policy between dusk and dawn, they stay in the bullet-resistant glass, the only way to get in there is a key or by a metric. If they leave that protection, there is a magnetic lock that they engage, so no one can enter the building. Of that, um, some of the employees can only work that shift. There's no other shift that they can work. So to ask them now to go and find a new job after working for us for that shift for 20 years is not something that should be done. We have never had any incidents of violence during this time, in my two and a half years, and like I said, the 20 years. If I continue down Calumet Avenue, I have a seven-year manager, 11-year manager, and then I have 10 months on Kennedy Avenue. None of these, um, gas stations have had any issues that haven't happened during the day. Belligerent customers, theft, these happen all day long in these gas stations and just not in Hammond. So when we focus on this stuff, there's a greater picture. So if we do it, then now they're going into Highland, Munster, same issue. There's no protection there for them. Now, I would be comfortable saying protect the employees, we should have bullet-resistant glass, but that's just my opinion, because we already have that in place, because we do care about our employees and we want to make sure that they're safe when they're there. Our customers start work at four in the morning. Um, I have some printouts for you guys that will show you our transaction counts between these times, and that's what I have, so.
So you're from Speedway?
I'm from Speedway. I don't know who would like these.
Alara Blake King.
And it's by district and then also by every single store. You're welcome.
Carlotta?
Good evening, Carlotta Blake King, ten oh four Highland Street, Hammond. I'm gonna change the subject just a tad bit. Um, a while back, the school board, Board of School Trustees approved the revised student handbook. And one of the revisions was regarding students who were caught with drug paraphernalia and we were making it more punitive. So as the discussion went, I shared with the board and Mr. Miller that there is a gas station sits right next to Wallace Elementary School that has a humongous sign that says vapes sold here. I also shared with them, there was allegedly some mini-market stores within the Hammond District that was selling edibles. So Mr. Miller indicated that he would look into it. So at the next meeting, he indicated that there is an ordinance on the books that says it's legal for that sign to be there. So I simply said, perhaps we need to go to the council and ask them to change the ordinance. Why would we allow a sign such as this in our community where our students can have accessibility to vapes and any other kind of drug paraphernalia? And by the way, um, if you wanna check with the other board members or to Mr. Miller, we do have an issue with it within our schools. There has been ambulances coming to some of our schools, removing our students allegedly with that stuff in them. So I am literally begging you, if the, if the ordinance does exist, can we look at that ordinance and change it so that mini-markets and filling stations cannot visibly advertise that they're selling this drug paraphernalia that's making it so much accessible to our students? Our future, our generation, you hear time and time again, they're our generation, they're our future. Huh, in God's name, if they're our future when we make it so easy for them to get a hold of this garbage? These children are vulnerable, seventh, eighth graders. They don't think like adults. And you know as yourself, when you were kids, you weren't faced with that. Those with you were children, your children wasn't faced with that, my children wasn't faced with those kinds of, uh, garbage peer pressure. So I'm begging you, please, Crime Watch should take it up as a project to look into how many filling stations, gas stations, mini-markets that have these signs so visible to the naked eye so that our students who can go to school, pick up their stuff without any, any drawback. So I'm literally begging you, on behalf of our children. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kayed Hamad. I'm from seventy-three oh five Kennedy Avenue, Sitco. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for being so concerned about the safety and , uh, well-being of the community. I don't think we, anybody disagrees with the mayor as business owners or, or residents about the safety. But it seems like our, my understanding is the mayor took the shortest cut or the easiest way out to resolve the problem. Um, so I have a few points to ask. What if, after closing after midnight, crimes happened at ten o'clock or nine o'clock at night? Are we gonna meet again and we go set the gas station to open at nine and eight and seven, maybe six? That's a point to ask. The second of all, um, probably if somebody mentioned this, uh, as crimes when we're closed, crimes when we try to open the gas station. So I'm going to open my gas station or closing at midnight by myself, that's a big risk in my safety and my, um, and opening in the morning, that's big safety risk. Um, opening the gas station, closing the gas station, and also the gas station being closed at that certain time, break-ins, and if you look at the, probably the gas stations that have been closed for the midnight, between midnight and five o'clock, and see how many gas stations had crimes with robberies or, or break-ins or whatever. Um, third point about employees, um, uh, somebody mentioned, I guess, twice and stuff, some, some of these employees do not have, um, a lot of either qualifications or time to do other jobs, so this is the only job that they have. So that's another point that you need to look into it. Um, and I don't know about, you know, gas stations being the haven of crimes and stuff like that in the, in the city of, uh, Hammond. I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of businesses that got more, more crimes, um, that I don't know, it's not mentioned. And third of all, if we are gonna go after small businesses, which is, you know, those probably closing an hour, it would affect the revenue for those gas stations, why wouldn't go have a blanket, you know, in, in the city of Hammond to close every business at midnight? And that would be fair for everybody. Thank you.
Next up, Sonny Tawana.
Uh, hello everyone, my name's Sonny Tawana from forty-four fifty Calumet Avenue. Uh, I have a few gas stations in Hammond, Indiana. We've been there for, you know, twenty, thirty years. Our first, uh, complaint would be, you know, break-ins at night. If we, you know, we've had several gas stations in the past where we used to close at night and every other day there would be a break-in. You know, if people see that there's no one working there, they're gonna break in, so, you know, who's gonna help us with that, you know? Also, we do a lot of sale at night, the casino's twenty-four-seven, we have the BP refinery that's, you know, open, people go to work at three, four in the morning. Sometimes the only time they have to stop at the gas stations is in the middle of the night. You know, people going to Chicago also, sometimes the only time they have is the middle of the night to stop, so where are they gonna go if everything's closed? Also, East Chicago, Highland, Munster, all the surrounding towns, they don't have a law to close at night, so why should we be the only ones that are forced to close at night? And then also, if we're forced to close at night, people just gonna go to these surrounding towns. So we're basically, the solution is to decrease crime in Hammond but increase it in Munster, Highland, East Chicago. You know, East Chicago's two minutes away, you know, from, uh, Hammond if you go from the, if you go from like Gotham Street. So what's the solution with that? And also, it's like, uh, the last guy said, it's unfair to close, just, why are we targeting just gas stations? We have McDonald's, Taco Bell, all these fast food chains that are open twenty-four-seven, crime happens there all the time at McDonald's. And why shouldn't they be forced to close at night? Why are only gas stations forced to close? Thank you.
George Stoyer.
Uh, to those of you that bothered to glance and get my letter, you'll notice that I called this measure, this legislative measure, uh, tantamount to an authoritarian declaration of martial law. I know that's kinda strong, but there's so much usurpation of our rights going on here. I mean, I, I like this one gentleman said, this rush to a blanket, uh, piece of legislation against gas stations should have been a very, very, very last resort, not the first one out of the gate. And I don't know where you guys have the right to invade my personal liberty as to when I go and get gas. You know, whether it's in the name, no, there are risks to life. There are risks to being American and our freedom requires, uh, undertaking some risk and using your common sense as to when you should go to the gas station. And not, and not, and it should not become the subject of a paternalistic, authoritarian protectionism in, in the form of, oh, let's blanket, yeah, why just gas stations? Where, where's it gonna stop? Dunkin' Donuts too? I mean, what is going on here? Isn't this the United States of America here? We're doing this Ron DeSantis thing here. We can't have books, now we can't, now we can't go get gas. You know, whether it's, I mean, I, I don't understand this, I don't know what's going on here. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm angry because I'm scared. I'm scared at this authoritarian creep that's entering into our life here. We're Hammond, Indiana, we're not Chicago, we're not, you know, this is where you, you're supposed to enjoy a maximal amount of liberty. What is the point of living in America if you don't have your freedom? That's what it's about. Our freedom to move about as our, at our discretion. We have to incur some risk, you gotta have some common sense. If places are dangerous, then you have to calculate that into your thinking and, and your decision-making. That's what it is to be an adult. And this stuff, this, this stuff is, I, I get, i- i- it subverts, it's subversive of our individual liberties, our rights and property. And guy, and more than anything else, it's an invitation to big fat lawsuits. Now the mayor and his attorneys can tell you that they have the right to regulate. Well, it's a question of the scope of the right. And I guarantee you, some of these corporations here, they've got councils just chomping at the bit, wanting to get in the, wanting to get at, get at our treasury, either in the form of injunctions or anything else, just rack up them legal bills. And there will be legal disputes and we'll have to send it down to Indianapolis, lawyers down there charging, what, five hundred thousand dollars an hour? No, that's not the ticket here. This, this is, this, this is just, I, I don't know, I've, I've, I, this is the last place I would expect it, out of Mayor Thomas McDermott. I, uh, I'm at a loss.
Next up, Ken Rosick. Next up, Ken Rosick.
I wanna change the subject just a little bit and get back on flooding, if we could. Um, yeah, I heard from residents today in North Hammond that they got some flooding and, uh, I heard some solutions about putting in backflow preventer valves and things of that sort. You know they're outlawed in Chicago and there's reasons for that, so you gotta, you kinda have to watch out for that a little bit. It's not the solution for everything. Um, proper development and sustainability is probably the best course to stop some of the flooding that goes on. We're getting overdeveloped. All the new gas station, all the new, uh, places over on, um, you know, along Indianapolis Boulevard and all that, covering up more impermeable surfaces is what's causing some of this flooding. In particular, we have a giant sponge in Hessville that the city wants to cover up with asphalt. Now, Mr. Rakos said it was only ten percent, but it's actually fifty-two percent. I would like to see him explain to me how in the hell he got ten percent of the area being covered. When you develop that area, and that's the plan, that's the long-term plan, you gotta look back in twenty-twenty. And we, no backflow preventer valve would save those people because we had water coming through the front doors. The water was waist-deep in the streets on North, North Hessville, waist-deep. Okay? And it was, and then also, oh, let's give them a backflow preventer valve, that'll solve the whole problem. No. Sustainability, sustainable production, sustainable development, not completely going around and eliminating all the green space in town without haphazardly, without really even caring. We, the, the trains have stopped parking in Hessville. Okay? They have stopped parking in Hessville. The bridge is now moot, but I got a feeling somebody's gonna come up with a reason to continue on with it because they want that free money, that free money. Anyway, we gotta start developing this town smart because it's now, we've reached a point, a tipping point. And you're wondering why you're getting, mayor said himself, everything worked, the whole system worked, right? The pumps, the this, the that, everything worked, nothing was clogged and you still overflowed. There's going, uh, uh, NOAA has predicted a seventeen percent increase in the amount of heavy rain events by twenty-fifty with climate change. We are gonna get more of these. And what are we doing? Covering up our spaces with more asphalt. That's not a smart thing to do.
Next up, Linda Anguiano.
I was very sick for almost three months, but I'm ready to speak again. Um, I couldn't be more at odds with our mayor McDermott. Um, he talks about the difference between his son working at a gas station and when Barry did. It's very paternalistic. How many of these people who are working at these gas stations, starting at midnight or ten, how many of them already have two other jobs during the day? How many of them are people of color? How many of them are immigrants? It's the best economy in the US, yeah, if you're white. He has a trouble with, uh, understanding who's against this, this resolution, this brainstorm of him. Again, just like with the Dunes, he comes up with this great idea and doesn't air it or get feedback from us, who are the voters, we're the constituents. And I'll tell you, I am so mad that nobody ever runs against you because I would promote them and I would vote for them. And I am going to share your record with everybody I can because you are paternalistic, misogynistic, and you think you have all the answers. I lived in Hessville during that flood and I was on Colorado Avenue and I had three people come and inspect, they said, oh yeah, you really have a problem, you'll get the five hundred. Oh, it was for homeowners only. So what about a renter? They don't cover for floods. I'm just really sick of this mayor, some really nice people who work for him, but I'm really sick of this mayor taking this paternalistic attitude, as do you, Mr. Rakos. And I love Day's idea to allow plenty of time for people to read this ordinance instead of just, the city council members find out when they get it, what, over the weekend? What kind of representation is this? What kind of democracy is this? I was really amazed by your comments, sir, because the word that kept coming to my mind is fascism. And I don't mind saying that I believe that Mr. McDermott is a fascist, doesn't take public input, he knows all the right answers. Okay, you're laughing again, you're smiling, I'd put you in that camp too. Yeah, you're welcome. I'm a voter, I pay my taxes, I was raised here and I care about Hammond. I don't have big, deep pockets in California and Colorado to run my million-dollar campaigns. I was hoping that you would get elected to the senate or a representative so you'd be out of Hammond. Because you, you take on these decisions and you don't get the feedback from the people. And to me, that's your biggest problem.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to second adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?